It's this is a committee of the whole, um, budget meeting. Let's go around the room and introduce ourselves and we'll call the meeting in order. Tim?
Shane Blazer.
Steve Bemke, District Eight.
Get it close to.
Patrick Delaney, District Seven.
Dennis Pollak, District Six.
Jake Caton, District Five.
Tom Raym, District Four.
Matt Zachary, District Three.
Dean Veneman, um, Council Chair, Council President.
Jake Linkforth, Parks and Building Superintendent.
Catherine Elkert, Library Director.
Thank you, Catherine. Okay, we have a budget reviews tonight and there's two, two, um, departments on the agenda and we're gonna begin with, um, Parks and Rec, so, um, I'll turn it over to Jake.
Yep. Alright, thanks again for having me this evening. So yeah, we'll be reviewing the 2024 department budget for the aquatics, the Parks Department, and then the Centralia Center. We'll just start with the Aquatics Center. Looks like it's on page number eight. Everyone's got it? Mm-hmm. So basically, I mean, this is gonna be a continuous thing in all my, all the objects that we're gonna be talking about. A lot of the increases are gonna be our labor and, um, incidental labor. So as you can see, for the aquatics, our seasonal labor, we bumped that up to an extra five thousand bucks mainly because we had such a young staff this season that we're hoping ninety of them, ninety percent of them come back next season. And with that, they all get a pay increase. They all, I believe they get a fifty cents increase in pay if returning. More stuff that we brought up was the equipment, um, an extra two thousand dollars, um, maintenance and repair. Just that, this will be year, I wanna say year five coming up and things, you know, like everything else, wear and tear. So we'll be starting to, um, even next year budget for, for more things, um, to be either fixing or replacing. Water, the, the price of units, um, usually goes up every year. Uh, same thing with the sewer. And then, um, property insurance went up. So with the aquatics operation and maintenance, that's what we are proposing for 2024.
Are, are you gonna get to the revenue part?
Yeah, yep. Anyone have any questions on page number eight? Page nine, um, again, this is just gonna be our seasonal labor budget for concessions, programming and instruction, and then the replacement, uh, reserve that we put in there every year. To explain what the program and instruction is, this is when we have lifeguards on staff, when we do our, uh, Walk Against the Current, our swimming lessons, so, by code, we need to have a lifeguard on site for these activities to, um, to happen, so. Again, with the seasonal labor, we're just bumping it up because of the amount of seasonals that we have this year. We're young and hoping to return next year. And then again, the twenty thousand dollars that we place in there, uh, for the replacement reserves, um, for next year. Any questions on page nine? Nope, sorry, forgot to mention, um, with the concession supplies that went up a little bit just because everyone knows the price of food, beverages, just keeps going up, so we're just trying to keep ahead of the game.
Jake, uh, replacement reserves.
Yeah.
You know, some of those pumps are quite expensive and that, if anything happens, what would take, or what do you?
Um, yep. So I've been working with Badger Pool, who were, were the original suppliers with, um, the pumps that we have on hand. And we do have, um, basically, we have, we don't have many pumps on hand, but we have like the impellers, the, the kits to replace them on hand, so if one were to go, we should be ready. Alright, so on top of page number ten, you can see for the total aquatics with the operational budget, um, and maintenance, it, uh, went up, uh, five point three percent, which equivalent is up to twenty-two thousand one hundred and sixty dollars from last season. So to the point that Jake was asking about with the aquatics revenue, um, so this past 2023, our operational budget was at, uh, four hundred and twelve thousand dollars and our revenue came in at four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars and some change, so, um, we made money this season, which is always good. I don't think, um, that's always the long-term goal, cause obviously we're here to provide a service, but it's also nice to, you know, either, um, make some money or break even, so that's always, that's always good to have. Because we all know that, uh, things like this will eventually need some, some replacement on some bigger, bigger things down the road. Alright, so aquatics revenue, um, guess what were you asking about, like, for?
I, I guess I don't really need you to read the numbers.
Okay.
Maybe I'll just speak to, the things that I, I see here, um, that really, really stand out to me and, and show what, what the Aquatics Center brings to the city and, and how it's doing financially, health-wise. One, one of the big ones, and I think on, on what I have, it's on page twelve and just under aquatics revenues, the, the non-residential season passes almost went up by four hundred percent. So I think it, it speaks to people in neighboring communities that all have splash pads. I know, I have friends who come down from Point I've ran into there. People are coming to Rapids and not only spending money on a daily admission, which is also up thirty thousand dollars, um, so twenty something percent there, but they're getting season passes. They like it so much. So things like that just stood out to me when you can look at the actual, uh, revenue from 2023 compared to actual in 2022, and how much that's just increased over one year. And I know some of that's tied in with, of course, the weather, but still, I mean, you got people that are non-residents, almost four times as many came this year than is last year, which I think is very telling.
Yeah, I think we're very, I don't know, I think we're a very fortunate city to have something like this and such a small community that it does, it does draw people from other communities and, you know, and that's great to see. Does anyone have any questions on pages ten, eleven? As far as revenue goes? Alright, I guess that concludes the 2024 budget for the Aquatics Center. Alright, can move on to the Centralia Center, which is on pages eighteen, nineteen and twenty. Again, you'll see a similar thing here with, um, most of the budget lines that have gone up from last year are gonna be our wages and our incidental labor, equipment and some of the building maintenance. Um, we did, it was about two weeks ago, I think, we did get the rooftop units replaced on the Centralia Center, so there are brand new, uh, six rooftop units up there and running. Um, and then in the year 2024, we'll be replacing the roof at the Centralia Center and then removing the skylight, so that'll be sometime in the year 2024. Any questions on page number eighteen?
No, but just a comment that, just so the public knows, that the rooftop was through ARPA funds?
Correct.
That we received, so that was a good utilization of those funds. They definitely needed it. What was the total number on that?
Um, I think total was like three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars-ish. It was under four hundred thousand, but yes, definitely needed.
So, so that wasn't direct tax dollars?
Right.
Went to that, just so the public knows.
I think, is it the roof being placed too with ARPA funds?
Yes, yes.
The rooftop units were replaced with, uh, were used with existing replacement reserves. And then you get brought.
Okay. Okay, so page nineteen, it just continues on with the commercial lease space. Again, as you can see, wages, incidental labor went up. Um, we are planning on to do in, in the winter of twenty twenty-four, expansion of our, I guess you wanna call it our physical activity room, uh, for the seniors. We're looking at maybe taking out a wall, expanding that to make it bigger and then moving the card room to the other side of the building. So that is in there for, uh, with the, with the building maintenance part. Yep.
Is there any revenue that's generated from the commercial lease space? We used to have some people in there, but.
I guess only revenue would be, you know, Tibunol, but like our senior center or the Lowell Center.
For the commercial side, um,
Or in general, I guess.
Yeah, the commercial side, then there's the, you know, senior resource side, which is the Lowell Center, ADRC and, uh, Park Place. Uh, the commercial side is basically the other side of the hallway and, um, the one, we have two tenants there currently. One is a community access, so they pay a rental payment into the Centralia for the use of that space out of their, uh, franchise fees for cable. And then we have the community theater. They prepaid their lease when they originally went into there and, but we do get utility reimbursements from them. So their per-rat a share of the utilities, they, they pay us on a monthly basis. Yeah, and then obviously in the senior resource side, we do have lease agreements with both Park Place and ADRC, and they also pay a per-rat a share of the utilities.
Am I, am I missing it somewhere? Is it? I don't, the rev, like, we just looked at aquatics and it had revenues. Is it, where is it in here? I'm just taking.
Yeah, the revenues aren't on this departmental budget.
That's alright, thank you.
But I can, there, and when we, when I put out the comparative summary that I'll have, I fund all the expenditures and then the related.
Okay.
Revenue.
I'm just mixing up the two now.
Alright, um, any more questions on page number nineteen? And then page twenty just shows our replacement reserves that goes back in that pool of money.
Tim?
If you look on page eighteen, I do have the senior resource center, uh, revenues there. If you look, uh, in the middle of the page, you'll see the three agencies and then the, the lease amounts that they pay and the estimated utilities that they'll pay in 2024. So those are the revenues for the senior resource side of the building.
Any other questions on Centralia Center? Okay, move on Jake.
Alright, park, 2024 park department budget, uh, starts on page sixty-five. And then for those that don't know, our dog park opened, uh, yesterday afternoon. Um, it was a great turnout. I think we had thirty to forty dogs there at one time, so, and then when we were there this morning, um, putting up the sign, there was probably nine dogs already at eight o'clock in the morning, so, um, I think it's gonna be a very popular place and we're proud to have it here in the city.
Nice job.
And we staying under budget, so, which is always good.
And that was room tax dollars, correct?
That was, yep, correct. That was the hotel motel, yep. Alright, on the page sixty-five here, we'll start with, uh, Winterfield, um, some of the prices on that with the wages and incidental labor went down, um, just cause as time has been passing, we've been upgrading things and replacing things, so we have been spending less time there. Again, though, with the equipment and supplies and material, um, everything that we do fix and replace seems to go up every year, so. And again, with the electric water, this was just our pretty much common things that we have to pay for, for that facility. Patrick?
Did we have a, uh, some claims against us that our property insurance has gone up so far? Like, it seems like it's taken quite a jump on a couple of these.
Gotcha. Not that I'm aware of. Tim, would you know?
Our, our buildings and property went up about, uh, nine thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars for, for that. And, but also the, the values that they place on each of the facilities changes from year to year, so, you know, so what I do is I look at all those values and allocate the, the premiums based on what the value of the buildings for each of the budgets, so that's probably what it is, so, but overall, buildings and property insurance went up nine thousand, which would account for the increases that you'll see throughout the budget.
Alright, uh, page sixty-five does, oh, sorry.
I got one question for Tim on that. Does that change based on improvements the rafters make to Winterfield? Is that technically, cause it's trying to bring up the value of the place and then we pay the insurance, or are they paying insurance on that stuff separately?
No, i- it, all the property we own, which is, you know, that we pay the insurance on that, so as, you know, as there's improvements made, as the, you know, we wanna make sure it's insured in case of a, you know, an incident, so.
Right, and I, I think it's a great thing when they do do improvements there. I'm just, you know, talking about why it might increase over time, yeah.
Any more questions on Winterfield? Uh, Mead Field starts on page sixty-five, but then continues on to sixty-six. A lot of that is basically our summer month activities. You know, we got the splash pad there, we got the softball fields, the baseball field, so, I know we are doing a, a small little project at the Mead, uh, used to be a concession stand, which is next to the splash pad that we, we're gonna be re, kind of revamping the inside and making that a rentable space, um, hopefully by next year. And then with the improvements of Mead Park, um, that we got the grand four through Legacy, that all will be coming off our, our park outlay, which is not taxed, not taxpayers' money, it's the hotel motel. So we're very excited about starting that project next year. I think that's just gonna revamp that whole park and that whole west, uh, the west side of town with, um, pickleball courts over there, a bigger playground next to the splash pad and just improvements around the splash pad, so. Other green areas is, uh, pretty much grass areas that we maintain throughout the summer and fall months, uh, mowing, string trimming, spraying weeds, which are, our arborists now are certified to be, to be sprayers, to be applicators. Again, just wages, incidental labor went up, um, and again with the equipment. Any questions on page sixty-six? Alright, on to page sixty-seven, it's Recreation Department. Um, again, as you can see, um, wages went up a little bit. Our part-time wage went up a little bit. We had a, actually, this is our first year, we actually had a part-time, um, recreation coordinator with us last year, uh, the person just didn't work out, so this year was the first year that we, she was there throughout the whole summer, which was a big help in our department. Really not much in operating expenditures. Some training went up a little bit, and then again with the supplies and materials. But out of that six thousand dollars that had increased was most, most of it, like I said, was the wages and incidental labor. Any questions on the Recreation Department? Alright, on the page sixty-eight, Parks Department. Again, you can see it went up eight point one percent, um, kinda in the middle of the sheet there, twenty-two thousand one hundred and thirty dollars, but out of that twenty-two thousand dollars, twenty thousand dollars of it was the wage increase, incidental labor. That was just the wages and benefits part. And then on the operational expenditures, equipment and supplies and material went up, uh, six thousand dollars for equipment and two thou, two thousand dollars for, uh, supplies and materials. Any questions on sixty-eight? Alright, so with the, with the budget line item for the whole park department with, uh, the wages, benefits, and then the operation expenditures, the park department itself went up eight point four percent for thirty-one thousand, um, and ninety-eight dollars. For the tree care, um, only thing that went up with that was equipment, materials a little bit, and then our contract payments. We switched over to, um, the person that used to do all of our stump grinding for us is retiring, so we had to find a new person to do stump grinding for us. He's, he was just a little bit more expensive than our previous one, so we just adjusted that line item an extra five thousand dollars. That also includes like trees that we are not able to get ourselves. Sometimes we do have to go out of house to have a, a different arborist come in with a crane, and there's just some things that we can't do in-house, so. Uh, we had a couple of situations at the cemetery where we obviously didn't want trees landing on headstones and stuff like that, so. Any questions on page sixty-nine with tree care? Onto the most visited park in the city. Uh, the City Zoo this year saw just over eighteen thousand people walk through its doors. Um, that was just over two thousand more than the previous years. Um, if you're asking what, how do we know this, we, our zoo attendant is in there, she tallies everyone who comes in and out. Yeah, she might tally a person once or, you know, twice, but, um, they're very good at what they do, and so that's how we keep track, and then at the end of the year, we um, add up all the, all the numbers and stuff like that, so. That's probably including some people that come at one o'clock, cause the petting zoo is closed from one to two, you know, those are people that she's probably, he or she aren't even counting, because the petting zoo at that time is closed, so. It's a very popular park. I know the residents and people who don't live in the city love going to it mainly cause it's free. I know we still have about two hundred and forty, two hundred and forty thousand dollars of the Teske Fund money that we have to spend by next year, or twenty twenty-five, excuse me. It was unfortunate we couldn't get our prairie dog exhibit open this year, but next, um, next spring it'll be up and running, so we're excited about that. We got some more ideas on how to spend the rest of that money. Um, we've been working on that for a couple of months now and, um, we're just, we're excited to make improvements to, um, like I said, the busiest park in the, in the city, so. It's really, um, for like the line items for the zoo, nothing really went up a whole lot, except for, you know, wages went up a little bit, equipment, supplies, and then, uh, just talking to our animal contractor, she was just gonna raise the price on animals, um, an extra thousand dollars. So for the zoo, it looks like it's just under six thousand dollars for, that went up from twenty twenty-three into twenty twenty-four. Actually, if you see in the middle of the page, I didn't see that before, it says zoo attendance on there, so you can see from twenty twenty-three all the way back to twenty eighteen. Obviously, twenty twenty, the numbers are way down, but that was due to COVID. Any questions?
I do. So the, the rent from Helen's House, does that go back into the zoo or does that go somewhere else?
That goes into our park department revenue. General revenue.
Alright, on the, bottom of the page seventy with Christmas decorations, um, nothing changed on there, so what we do on that, um, with the wages and incidental labor, the Parks Department is in charge of putting up all the Christmas decorations, um, we'll probably start here mid-November. Um, and it also does include, you know, we, we have to check them every once in a while, cause lights do go out, um, and then at the end of the season, um, usually we take them down after the first of the year. So it takes about a week to take everything down and store back at the Saratoga Building, so. That's kinda what we do with the Christmas decorations. Um, nothing went up from there, it actually went up eight hundred and seventy-five dollars from last year. Any other questions on City Zoo Christmas decorations?
Can you explain the outlay on the next page?
Yeah, so it's.
Twenty-one to twenty-two and then back to four again?
Yeah, so basically every year, it's just like any other outlet, it's like our reserve funds, basically like we put an extra four thousand bucks in there each year to either get new decorations or, you know, replace ones that have failed, so.
So we did two years in twenty-one, is that what?
I don't know if that was a kickover from twenty nineteen?
Tim?
Cause this is a replacement account, so we put four thousand dollars in annually, but like you see in twenty-one is where we actually purchased something out of that replacement account, so that's why the expenditure is higher.
Okay, got you. Thank you.
Alright, and on the page, the, uh, page seventy-one, right in the middle is the bike trails. Um, this is something that Paul Volard and the Street Department oversee. As you can see, there's a pretty hefty increase from last year, so they're gonna be, and Paul can go in more in-depth on what they're gonna be doing, um, during his budget speech. Um, I think they're gonna be doing a bunch of repairs on the bike path underneath, um, the West Side Expressway and continuing. Um, again, though, this is something that Paul kinda oversees and he can, if you guys have any more questions about that, he'll be bringing that up in his budget. And then in the bottom of page seventy-one, special events, uh, nothing changed. We just are, again, um, with the fireworks, we had an extra three thousand dollars in there, so from twenty-two thousand dollars, uh, this past year, we added three thousand to make it twenty-five thousand for the twenty twenty-four Fourth of July fireworks. And then again with the wages, that's, um, you know, we're there the day before setting up garbage cans, putting out barricades, and then the day after, we come in about three in the morning to do the garbage cleanup. Any questions on that then? So that pretty much summarizes what I had for the budgets for twenty twenty-four with the parks department, Aquatic Center, and Centralia.
Dennis?
Uh, thank you. Jake, do you feel you have enough spare parts for any minor problems that you might have? You know, with the pump or what, what have you?
Yep, yeah, and I, yeah, for sure. I think we have enough on hand that if something were to go wrong, like, we should be okay.
Okay.
We also do have pumps that, let's say, obviously a filtration pump is a pump that we always have to keep on. But let's say a twenty-horse pump that operates our, our kid slide, that goes out, we could probably move a pump from a different attraction to that, to the pump that broke down and closed something until we get a replacement. So there are pumps that are the same size that we can, we can move around to, to make.
So you feel that you got enough pumps or?
Yeah, we have too many pumps then.
Enough there, so you may not have to call anybody in or?
No.
I mean, you never know, but.
Yeah, our staff between the pool operator and mechanics are very well inclined on, on what, what they, what they need to know and how to fix things.
Okay, as long as you've got enough parts, that's, that's all I wanted to know. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Your honor?
Yeah, I think a couple of things to remember for this meet, for these budget hearing meetings is, this is that time, the reason why we came to a committee of the whole versus finance. Because this is, this is when you would make, and this will be for all meetings and all budgets, is this is the time to make changes, recommendations, pull out money, add money. Trying to keep it rolling total, so all of a sudden last night, there's not big changes being made. So I just ask you to utilize this time to do that and not wait till the final hour. And then secondly, I told Jake I'd bring this project up tonight and just get you guys thinking about it. For many years now, the community, through community leadership projects, has had this hope and desire to do a bridge lighting project. Jake and I have been kind of working on gathering information. Since the bridges are in the downtown TIF district, there is, I don't know what it's gonna fund. But what's the projected funding for that TIF?
The downtown TIF, yeah, that's projecting out fairly well. We, we don't have any committed projects at this point, but projected out through the end of its life in twenty thirty-two. We'll be generating about three million in tax increment that can be used for designated projects in the TIF project plan. One of them is the bridge lighting.
So because of that, if, if, at that time, if you don't use it, all the taxing jurisdictions will get their money back. And so it's almost a use or lose it type thing. And since it is part of the project plan, it's, it's something I think that I put out there for you to consider. We, getting estimates, I was kind of shocked, and that's why I've kind of, I was reluctant to even kind of put it in the budget. Each bridge is about a hundred and twenty-five thousand, so it's a quarter of a million dollar project, and it is a lot. And, but then when you think about what that is projected to produce, what are, what are you gonna spend that on down the road here? So it's a project I think at this point, if you'd consider it, some time went into it. I think part of the big, the big cost to it is renting that special boom truck that kind of bends in different directions. And Bill, I've offered Hank Jake over on a rope, but he's not really into that, so. So there is this expense of, of this truck, but it's something to consider if it's a project you want to do this year and if it's the right time. I, but I just want to put that out there.
Uh, Mayor, thanks for bringing it up. Is this, uh, like what was presented to us several years ago when we were talking about like the downtown? With the bike path projected and, uh, because then some of that was for bridge lighting, it actually was in there too, is this?
And it could be part of that, but this is, I think it's been talked about even before that, or for years about, you know, it would be on the side of the bridges. Because obviously if it's underneath, I think with the high water, we'd end up losing a lot of light. But it, but it is LED lighting, they switch colors, you can do seasonal colors, you can set it to go from nine to midnight. But, yeah, you're correct, though. I, I think that was in that plan, but I think it was greater. Like you said, it included other areas.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, it's something to enhance the downtown, and that's kind of what the whole purpose of the TIF is, and, and to be able to do those projects. And also I talked to the city engineer, we still have River Wall to deal with, and, and that would come out of the TIF, it needs to be top-pointed. And there, there's obviously permitting through the DNR that has to be done for things below water surface. But there, there's gonna be a price take to that, which the TIF will then also pay for that also, outside of other revenues.
Can we look or be informed, I guess, what you guys have been looking at as far as the bridge lighting and that? You know, look at some, when other cities have something like that, I mean, if that's something that's being looked at, that's.
So, so.
I don't know if remarkable is the right thing. It's, it's interesting what they can do. They can change their colors and whatnot on some of them and for different occasions. I don't know if that would be part of it, but.
Yeah, yeah, you could do seasonal colors.
Something, and if it's, you know, it's a lot of money, but it, it's there, but if it, you know, would be an attraction or of some type anyway for, you know, people to see.
So I guess my recommendation would be is if that's something you're interested, put it in the budget. But we would have to go out to bid because of the price, and I think at that point, that bid, you know, can be rejected or hopefully it'll come in less. But we were kind of just getting rough numbers, trying to figure out what it would cost to do the project. And, but they're rough because we don't have any direct estimates, but working with a local contractor, that's, that's estimates that came in. And I was hoping it was gonna be that much for one, or two bridges was for the price of one, but not quite.
I'd be interested in pursuing it to look at what possibly would, could be done or whatever.
Go ahead, Jake.
So I think we're all familiar with TID and why we, here's my opinion on a lot of things is that, and the TID is one of them. And there's a time constraint on it. It's like, let's, let's get moving on it, let's start doing projects, let's start doing things. But I think we really need to educate the public because I, this comes up, it came up with the dog park with someone actually I just talked to today. With the misunderstanding of like where taxes are being, being, like the levy is coming from versus room tax, TID. So I could just see how this would be phrased if, if the cost for bridge lighting comes out. And people think that that is somehow taking away from things like the police department or the fire department when it's completely separate. So I, I'm, I'm in favor of the bridge lighting. I think it would enhance the downtown. I think we do need to get moving on projects of all sorts and just moving the city forward. Spending money that needs to be spent by a certain time or we lose it. And the Christmas parade is down there, the Fourth of July is down there. There may even be more events down there as we starting to revitalize the downtown even more. So I think the reasons are there, the funding's there and actually needs to be spent. And again, I, I would just hope when whoever gets the phone call, if it's you, Mr. Mayor, or if we put out a press release that we're, we educate citizens on, you know, exactly what, where this money's coming from and, you know, why it is being used as such. So that there's no confusion coming to myself and other elected officials on how could we spend this much money on a bridge lighting. But I, at this point, I'm saying put it in. I don't know if you need a motion for that. But we could also just, if it's a rolling towards the final budget, Tim, if you want to include it and then, you know, show that it's coming out of the TID. And if anybody is not against that, I guess, then we can vote on that piece when we get to that point in the budget, but.
Patrick?
So if the initial cost is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, I'd just like to know what the maintenance would be and what the life expectancy of these lights are to keep them up and operational. Also, I think there should be some sort of ordinance made as far as what lights get put on where. So that we don't have some, uh, I don't know, who would, who would it be up to that makes our town look silly, so.
Yeah, I would agree with you.
All right, that's all.
So we will get some information on, we'll contact some communities that have bridges with lights on it. We'll get some kind of maintenance cost. And then, yeah, I think between the mayor and maybe some, some staff people kind of, kind of come up with a policy on how it's gonna be utilized. You know, you can do green on St. Patrick's Day, and, you know, there's just a lot of different options out there. And maybe just a normal white and non kind of days, so. But we'll get a little information, so when it comes time throughout this budget here, we'll get, we'll, we'll email you.
Tim, can you reiterate again the use it or use it, lose it by date?
Right, uh, well, in tax incremental districts, you're capturing the tax increment. And you not only capture the city tax portion that's generated from new development in a TID district, but you also capture the school district, Wood County, and mid-state. And they have a statutory life of X amount. The expenditure period for the downtown TID, which is TID number seven, is the end of twenty twenty-seven. And then the revenue period goes out to twenty thirty-two, so they cut off the expenditure. But then with the reason why the revenues go is so that you can capture that revenue and hopefully pay back your project. And then at the end of the, the TIF, if there's a surplus in that TIF, then it's, those, that surplus is distributed prorata to the other taxing jurisdictions. The city gets to keep its portion, and then the other taxing jurisdictions get their prorata. If there's a deficit in the TIF, then the city's a hundred percent responsible for any deficit.
So we don't need a motion on this item? You can just bring it back to the, to add it to the budget?
Right, I'll, I'll put it, we have a, I'll put it in the tax incremental district number seven budget. And then obviously, you know, as, as, as we move forward and, you know, you go out to bid or whatever, you know, and get future information. There'll, there'll also be an approval process down the road for the actual project, probably sometime in twenty twenty-four, I would think.
So we don't need a motion for this particular item then, or do we do? Okay, we don't need action, okay.
Jake? Yeah, so regarding the, the TID, the River Wall talk was mentioned as one of the other projects. Do we have a plan for what the rest of the life of the, the TID is? Or are we still needing to develop that and spend it by twenty twenty-seven? Is that gonna eat it all up, or is there still gonna be money there that we should be brainstorming ideas on and what to do downtown?
I mean, I think, yeah, with the, the projected surplus now, obviously, you know, that, that those can change for a year, that's just a, a projection. If you see any decrease in value in the TID, that'll obviously lower that figure. But we have until twenty twenty-seven, and I think that it's at a point now where, you know, we'll be, with the twenty-four budget, we'll have three years to kind of look at some of those projects. I mean, there's, like the River Wall is a specific project in there, you know, obviously the, the bridge lighting, but then there's also development. And we have the Northern Steel Castings project that, you know, that we're looking into where the TID could be utilized for some of the redevelopment of that property. So I think, but yeah, I think over the next, this year and next, that, you know, we should be looking at how we want to utilize. And, you know, assuming if, if that downtown plan that's being proposed by Kyle Kearns is, is, is approved, you know, somehow looking, you know, hopefully that might generate some ideas on some development there with the triangle and other properties.
Anything else then? That would wrap it up for Parks then? Okay, thank you, Jake.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Want to move directly into the library? It'll take a minute or up to you guys? Okay, all right. At this point, we'll turn it over to Catherine, and we'll talk about the library.
Hello. All right, so I'm gonna have you look at this very handy, dandy handout. And we're gonna run through this quick. Obviously, if you have any questions for me, please feel to, to speak up. I really do see this as an educa- educational opportunity for council, but most importantly, the public. I know a lot of people are watching live. Okay, so, um, moving into the twenty-four budget, we will actually be coming in under budget, both in our overall expenditures, but also in the amount that we are asking from the city in twenty twenty-four. That first slide you see is kind of a general description of what our revenues look like. Sixty percent, give or take, comes from the city of Rapids through property taxes to the library. And then thirty-three percent come from, mostly from Wood County, and that is the reimbursement process that I've, I've chatted about before. And we'll, we'll revisit that again tonight. And then we do have kind of some in-house ways of generating revenue. Again, it's not a ton, coming in a little over twenty-six thousand dollars. But so you see kind of a breakdown of most of our funding coming from those two big sources, the city of Rapids and then our Wood County. The next page is kind of a historical comparison, just giving you, not quite ten years, but an overview of our revenue sources, basically comparing the Rapids property taxes coming to the library. And you see from twenty sixteen, it's kind of been a steady increase until last year in twenty-three, where the library board cut two hundred and fifty K from our budget walking in to the budget proceedings. And then council removed a hundred thousand dollars as well. So from twenty-two to twenty-three, when we, uh, our budget was cut by three fifty in total in terms of funding from the city of Rapids. Comparing to twenty-three to twenty-four, it's another decrease. This, again, made by the library to kind of show good faith. For the past few years, the library has been a hot button issue in budget, and the library board is very aware of that. As the new director, I, I was directed by the library board to make thoughtful cuts that could be sustainable without dramatically impacting services. And I think we've managed to do that pretty well. Moving into twenty-four with the additional hundred dollar, a hundred thousand dollar cut, I think is manageable. Otherwise, it, it would not have been, I would not have proposed it. But you see basically, our twenty-four request is less than the twenty seventeen request. So I, we're really trying to, to come to the council with a responsible budget. I do want to talk a little bit about county reimbursement, so that's the third page. So counties are required to pay public libraries in their county and their adjacent counties at least seventy percent of the cost of library services provided to residents that live in their county without a public library. So for example, the citizens of Grand Rapids do not have a library provided to them in town. Many of them choose to use the McMillan Memorial Library as their library. So anytime someone from Grand Rapids comes to our library, checks out a physical item, Wood County is on the hook for paying back a portion of that cost. State statute says seventy percent. Right now, it's looking like Wood County will continue to fund that at a hundred percent. That's not a guarantee, that's what the library board of Wood County is recommending. And we won't know that closer, the exact amount until November, but I'm feeling pretty confident about that figure. So the costs are calculated basically on two points, total library operations, our expenses basically, and those are operating expenditures, not capital, and then the library's total physical circulation. And then, the library's total physical circulation. Using those two numbers, we find a unit cost, and that unit cost is times per the non-resident circulation. Now, is this formula perfect? Absolutely not. As the mayor likes to say, it doesn't count all the people that kind of come into the library and use our resources without checking out materials. And people do that all the time, right? When you drive by the library, you see people in the parking lot using our Wi-Fi. And we're happy to, to create that service for our community. Over three-hundred thousand people used our Wi-Fi last year. But we aren't getting any money back from the county for that. Again, this kind of state statute was developed years ago before the idea of Wi-Fi existed, right? Before a lot of our circulation came from e-materials. But we are unique in the fact that the library brings in a considerable amount of funding that's not from the city. Thirty-three percent from the county, to be exact. So, that's a really important part, because this is why the library's budget becomes so complicated, right? It's tied directly to our operations and directly to our physical circulation. The next page is our expenditures, what we will be looking to spend in '24. Again, this is, uh, the bulk of our expenditures are coming from our library staff. Obviously, I think of our, our budget as a values document, and when I look at our budget, you see really what the library values, the librarians and the library staff. Without our staff, patrons couldn't find materials, get their programs, do any of the cool things that they're doing every single day. Our contract supplies and buildings and grounds is coming in a little under, um, four-fifty K. And then, our collections materials, uh, is a hundred-and-fifty K. Rounding out our programming and technology costs is around ninety thousand dollars. So, that's just a brief overview. I wanna give anybody, does anybody have questions about, Jake?
Hey.
Yeah?
Can you give me the, so I'm looking at the positions, and then you just mentioned it, but wages make up the majority of the budget. Can you give me the salaries for pretty much everyone but the customer service leads, customer service associates, and customer service assistants? Those, the, the more managerial positions?
Yes, so our, most of our full-time positions are degreed positions, so they all have master's degrees. In the building, we have, um, I believe, six master-degreed librarians, myself included. The director receives a hundred thousand dollars, the assistant director, eighty thousand dollars. The managers, the librarians, basically make between sixty and seventy thousand dollars. The customer service leads, um, that's multiple humans, which is a hundred-and-twenty-five-ish total. And then, um, the associates, which, um, is two-hundred-and-thirty hours, again, many different humans, is kind of our most expensive staffing item at, uh, a quarter of a million dollars. The assistants, um, are a hundred-and-sixty hours a week, and that's a hundred thousand dollars.
What is, what is their hourly? For, I, I can see, like, customer service associate, there are six of them.
Mm-hmm.
What do they make hourly?
Ooh, um, the associates, I believe.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to break down, you know, wages is the majority of the budget here.
Yes.
Unfortunately, you gotta look at the citywide, so I think, I'm not, I'm not saying it would be the library, but I think over the course of the kickoff of these departmental budgets, there will be multiple departments, possibly, that will have to, will have to look at position, so kinda need, and I'll ask this of other department heads too, if I don't already have the information, what positions that show up on here is, you know, we know there's one of them listed in 2024, and then it groups down as a total for a department in 2024, but, you know, what are those individually paid?
Um, the service leads make around twenty-five dollars an hour. The associates make fifteen, seventeen dollars an hour. The library assistants, I'm not sure, I think it's around fourteen dollars an hour?
Thank you.
Um, one thing to note, Jake, uh, the frontline staff, I do believe, has been historically systematically underpaid. And I am a hundred percent very aware that the city needs to be watching its bottom line. One reminder, though, the council, you know, whether or not the council would recommend to cut a certain position, ultimately, that's the decision of the library board.
Right.
So, you could remove additional funding from the library, um, but as someone who has been directed by the library board to increase programming and increase services, cutting staff would be my last, um, suggestion to, um, moving through any budget issues. We would definitely have to cut services before we cut staff. Our facility is huge, we're open sixty-plus hours a week, sixty, you know, six days a week, sixty-plus hours, um, a week. And it's already, we're already having a hard time, like, staffing, just our everyday building. So, cutting staff would be complicated for a number of reasons, though I understand why you think that would be kind of your first idea to cut.
Not necessarily to cut.
Oh, okay.
I, I, I think, uh, the same, i- if it comes to this, I mean, this is one part of a larger discussion, and I, I'm not gonna come out the library and, and make you eliminate positions, but if, if there was money to, that needed to be moved from, it wouldn't just be the library, I'll tell you that with what we're looking at, but it would, I would suggest that there be some restructuring. I don't, I don't think you need, would need to necessarily let anyone go, but when I look at the budget, there's not really, if, if we do need to go there, I don't, i- if you have other recommendations, but I think I know that there are degreed librarians and there's customer service leads, and I would let, I would leave that up to you, how you wanna restructure your own staff, but if, from what I see on the budget, that's kind of, I feel where we would have to go, unless you had other ideas. And hopefully, we don't have to go there, we don't know who's coming in following years in Jake's presentations tonight that is gonna say, hey, we might not fill this position, and we might end up where we're at, but, the mayor, I was gonna talk to you about this on the side, but as you said, it would probably best to just get it out and work through it, so it's not safe for last minute.
Oh, I completely agree, I wanna answer all of our questions. I know that we do seem to be really staff-heavy. And I just need everybody to remember that we are a public-serving entity, a public-facing entity. Our building is nearly fifty thousand square feet. Even with four humans staffing the building at a time, it, it does not always feel safe. So, cutting staff would be, I would, I would not recommend cutting staff at this time. Like I said, um, previously, you know, I have been aggressive in terms of going through different line items and cutting. So, we've already kind of done that. So, let's, if everybody, did I answer that question though, Jake?
No, I thi- I think you still referenced that, I'm insinuating that you cut staff. I, I wouldn't say that, I would say, I mean, I just had you read over what they each get paid, I, I think it would be left up to you, how you wanna restructure that. That could mean changes in titles and duties and pay, but nobody needs to be cut, I don't. However you would wanna do it, and we don't even know if we need to get there, but I'm just saying, if it does come to it, uh, and we're having a, a larger conversation about the budget and they bring up the library, that would be my recommendation to the rest of council before we say, hey, Catherine, you're getting only this amount of funding this year, and it's a drastic amount less than previous years. I would say, this is my recommendation, that you look at staff and you find out a way to keep everybody, but possibly restructure duties, titles, et cetera, and with that, you know, what each position gets paid, um, before we need to cut, cut anybody. Uh, that, that's where I would go with it. Cause that conversation's happened previously, as, as you know.
Yes.
I'm just saying, I'm not gonna come and give you a dollar amount, I'm, I'm gonna give you where, what I think would be reasonable, unless you have, you know, other areas that you could take from, but it's just such the largest area in your budget.
It is.
Yeah.
Um, and we did cut a position in '23. So, I'm gonna run through the details, page fifty-seven in your budget books, but page six in the little handout. So, um, Jake was mentioning the positions at the top. Staffing has stayed steady since, um, moving forward into, to '24 from '23, though we did cut that full-time manager position back in '23. Moving forward to our wages and benefits, like I indicated, it is sixty-four percent of our budget. This year for '23, our staffing and wages will be under budget, mostly because we have been short-staffed for the majority of the year. Next year, it's kind of a return to full levels of staff, which, um, everybody's gonna appreciate. Operating expenditures and buildings and grounds, um, both of those, um, line items will be decreased compared to '23. As I become more familiar with the library's operations, I finally have a full year under my belt. There are a lot of examples of me cutting, um, making sustainable cuts to our workflows and changing things, um, in ways that are really saving us money. For example, buildings and grounds, in 2022, we spent a two-hundred thousand dollars. Next year, I'm budgeting eighty, uh, you know, a hundred-and-sixty-five for total, going from a hundred-and-thirty-five for buildings and grounds down to eighty-five. So, there are a lot of different ways that the library continues to kind of be, um, thoughtful in examining the different line items. The materials is pretty much staying the same. Small decreases, really, the only collections that we're expanding right now are digital materials and large print. Both because those are kind of, um, high-down-end items for our community. Obviously, the large print, um, appeals to our seniors, and the digital materials, uh, appeal to all of our kind of busy bee adults. The electric situation is, uh, we're no longer paying our monthly lease payments to Viking Electric, so all of that will just kind of go straight to water and light. I'm estimating that to be around the same, though, again, we don't have any, um, current data about how much our electric bill will be without the solar panels potentially. Computers and technology, I'm slowly increasing those, um, as our continued use demands it. And then, finally, for programming, um, our programming budget is remaining flat. So, overall, um, a four percent decrease from '23 expenditures to '24. So, we really already are making those cuts that council has asked of us in the past. Library revenues, um, we will be bringing forward a hundred-and-fifty K of our previously appropriated funds to count towards our revenues. Again, this is not a sustainable revenue source, but the, um, I'm really trying to show good faith to the council that we are really aware that you want us to keep our budget down. Wood County, the, uh, county reimbursement payments are going slightly down from '23 to '24, and that's just kind of an example of how the calc- calculation can make our payments vary from year to year. The miscellaneous revenues coming from in-house are around twenty-seven thousand dollars. Photocopying, lost books, book sale, things of that nature. So, totally, our total budget, um, from '23 to '24 is decreasing by three percent, and the property taxes we are requesting from council are decreasing eight percent from '23 to '24. Now, I went through that pretty quick, and I know we all have lots of questions about the library's budget, so what can I answer?
I have one on, um, e-materials you just mentioned. So, uh, we budgeted on eBooks, um, seventy-five hundred in '23, and you moved that to eleven thousand in '24, and I know this is an expensive item, but I'm just wondering about taxpayer dollars for that. When, um, I looked up a Kindle subscription for, um, unlimited is ten dollars a month. And I almost wonder if this should be a fee-based type situation, that's my thoughts on that. I just don't understand giving that out when something is readily available from the private sector from, for such a minimal amount. That's my question on that particular item.
Dean, I'm gonna respectfully disagree with you on that. Um, if anybody has looked at the recent ALICE report from our Wood County United Way, forty-five percent of the residents in Wisconsin Rapids are basically living in poverty or are one emergency away from being pushed into poverty. Forty-five percent of our community. That doesn't sound like a lot of humans that can afford, you know, ten dollars a month for Kindle U, and then, what, another fifteen dollars a month for Netflix? And then, I don't even know, how much are you paying for internet a month? All of these kind of add up. And I believe it's the duty of the library to provide recreation, learning, access information to our community without charging. We are already getting funds from our community members through their property taxes, particularly those, um, that live in Wisconsin Rapids. Now, as long as the county charges, um, reimburses at a hundred percent, everybody will be paying the same rate for their use of their library, but I would think that would be kind of double taxation.
And so, that, I guess I don't, don't know what our history has been in use. Where would you say you are year-to-date in eBook checkouts?
Where we are in year-to-date checkouts, what an awesome question. I think we have, let me look at my 2022 numbers. We have approximately, so, so it's not like the library is individually buying eBooks. We are part of a statewide consortium that we all put our money into as a public library. So, all of the Wisconsin libraries kind of pool their money for this library collection. Through that, we have access to over, I think it's three-hundred thousand items. Obviously, that wouldn't be accessible, um, just through, you know, the Kindle U. And I would also argue that most people, many people wouldn't, don't, don't have a Kindle, don't like a Kindle, don't wanna Kindle, you know?
Well, I mean, that would, audible or anything, because they're, they're still looking, listening to it on their phone, right?
Yeah, you're right.
So, they could listen to it on any of those, uh, apps on their phones, correct?
Yes, but those apps all cost money. And the library provides those things, um, without additional charge. It looks like last year, we checked out almost fifty, fifty thousand electronic items. So, that's eBooks, e-audiobooks, and, um, videos. And I like just to think of this as kind of another way to attract users into the library. I think there's, I think there's a lot of misinformation out there in our community and in the world. And the library is one of the And the library is one of the few places that a human can go and kind of figure out the world for themselves. And whether a human wants to do that with their phone digitally or with a physical book, I think it's the library's job to provide these items in a variety of formats because we're serving the whole community, not just one human.
Catherine, is that Libby?
Oh, I love that, yes, Libby.
So, okay.
Yeah.
But you don't get credit for the checkout on Libby, though?
So we do not get credit for the checkouts. Um, so the mayor is right. You, we, the e-materials don't, we don't get credit for that in county reimbursement, though our system is very strict, and you can only access the Libby materials with our barcodes. So it's our users using our materials.
Thank you.
Jake?
I was just gonna comment on the eBooks. I, I don't know if the, in a good way, I don't, I don't think the checkout, eBook checkout that's available from the library is comparable to the Kindle subscription, because it seems like the Ki- the Kindle subscription is more, they have selective books on there, and they leave out like some of the major titles, it seems like. So I don't know if it's an even comparison. I, you had mentioned that earlier regarding that. So I know people use the eBooks from the library, and I, we know how the funding works on that. Shane just touched on it, so I'll use this opportunity to plug the library, or in a public setting, to maybe consider checking those books out instead of the eBook. But the eBook's a, a good resource, and if you read something and you're into it, go down and check it out, because it helps support the library.
Patrick?
Good evening, Catherine. I'll be very nice compared to previous. So I just have a, a couple of questions. Could you describe the eighty-five thousand dollars for the, uh, library building and grounds, what that goes towards?
Uh, that's such a good question. I actually, I'm a big dork, no one's surprised. Um, and I have really struggled with our, our line item codes, right? I talk about this with the library board all the time. We have a line item for EAP, which is the Employee Assistance Program. That's usually eight-hundred dollars a year. And then we have a Buildings and Grounds line that, before I arrived, was a hundred-and-forty K a year. That just, to me, doesn't make any sense. It is a big, it is a big encompassing, um, line item. And the things that we use that item are kind of our monthly cleaning costs, any regular kind of maintenance to, when the elevator guy comes, when we're having issue, issues with our HVAC, um, any kind of building paper supplies, as you could imagine with, in twenty-twenty-three, we had, no, twenty-two, we had over a hundred thousand visitors. Um, and I don't wanna brag, but everybody loves using our bathrooms. So we go through a lot of paper products. Those are all examples of things that are coming out of that Buildings and Grounds line. And, you know, any kind of a thing that goes wrong. Um, recently, most recently, I charged, um, some leather gloves and some nets because we've been getting bats. So we've been catching those bats with those nets, and those were charged to Buildings and Grounds. As time goes on, I, I do believe that we can continue to kind of decrease that line, um, but we do have a very large facility. And, um, while some of it is renovated, some of it continues to be the nineteen-seventies building that it definitely is. So there are kind of regular upkeeps to that as well.
Okay, so this year, you came to us with a, a bit of a de- decrease. Is that something that you foresee happening, uh, year after year? Are you saying, hey, I gave it to them this year, and that's all they're getting? So next year, when we come back, we're gonna, what's your, what's your plan here?
What's my plan? I wish I could tell you the future. Um, but historically, when I look at the budgets that I've been in charge of here in Rapids and in Rice Lake, I consistently do come on under budget. Um, when I'm building my budget, it is very conservative. Again, my number-one priority is always gonna be the library staff, but I remain very thoughtful in terms of the amount that we're spending on materials and supplies and things of that nature, and it is a balance. The library board wants me to expand programming and services, and I've been able to do that right now, even with, you know, the four, four K, four-hundred thousand dollar decrease that we've had over the two years. I can't guarantee, but I do believe that this will continue, that we will be able to bring flat or decreased budgets moving forward.
Okay, here's a question that I came up with just because of Jake's questions. Your last three line items on the positions, they include twelve-point-five people, and you threw out some numbers there. Do those numbers include benefits, or are those just straight pay?
So you're talking about the leads, associates, and assistants?
Correct, and I, I have here a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, and a hundred thousand.
Yes.
Is that correct?
So, um, good question. Our customers, um, are, I don't love these names, I will be changing these names, Jake. Um, the leads and the associates do receive benefits. Um, we have forty-hour-a-week humans, and we have twenty-hour-a-week humans about, and obviously, the twenty get prorated benefits.
No, no, my question was, does, does your hundred thousand and two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, does that number include the benefits, or is that separate from the benefits?
Oh, um, I pulled those from my annual report. I believe those include the benefits.
Okay. Because to me, as a, just a regular citizen, I don't know if everybody knows how it works. They, library asks us for an appropriation, and we cannot tell them, once they get their money, we can't tell them how they can spend it. But as a citizen, it appears that you're spending over seven-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars for six people at the top, and you're getting the four-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand for the, the lower people. And I understand that it is a big building. But I would just wanna reiterate what Jake had said, that there might be a little bit of movement in there. And I, I do know how it is working with people, how you end up caring for them and for their families. So I, y- your job is not an easy one. I do appreciate the work that you've done and getting it down as far as you did.
Mm-hmm.
That's all I have for you.
Thank you, Patrick.
Um, I was gonna continue on, I, I had a question on, pardon? Okay, I'm sorry. Um, back on the, um, buildings and grounds, I was just gonna ask to finish that. Are you, are you going to come in under, you, you and I, we talked about, you were tracking under on a couple of things. Do you think you're gonna come in under ninety-five on twenty-twenty-three?
I do believe it.
Okay, that was my question. Who's up, Shane?
So I brought this up to Catherine when we met. I think my, and I hate to use the word struggle, but it's really not a struggle. It is when departments bring in their budgets to us, well, no, you, we can look at so, uh, an activity and say, no, we can't afford that activity. But it's different with the library, because if the library board says, we want more programming, and it's, we don't have that kind of like oversight on that, other than the appropriation saying, well, we can't afford more programming. And so that's the struggle is, A, you got your staffing costs, you got your other costs, but what I look at is, what's the base services for any department? And the extra stuff is add-on. Or if you increase programming, what are you gonna cut to cover that cost? So the appropriation doesn't go up, or for council to decide, well, we're not gonna raise the appropriation to cover the program, you're gonna have to do it in-house. And I think that's my, lack of a better word, a struggle, is that, you know, departments, you have that little more oversight on, well, you can't increase your bu- budget to do this activity. But when you come with your appropriation request, you know, that could inclu- include additional programming and other items, which council doesn't get a say on that. And so if the appropriation's cut, because we don't have that extra money to do a new program, where do you get it in your budget? And that, that's kind of my whole struggle, is what's the base kind of services that all departments do? And what's the bonus, and is that bonus affordable? And it's difficult with the library.
It is.
Because it's a proportion.
It's a complicated, the library remains kind of a complicated beast, right? Unlike, uh, say, other departments, I have three kind of overlords, right? Council, county, and the library board. Um, and though, they often do have differing opinions on what our priorities are. The, what the mayor speaks of is a state statute, um, requirement. The council can control the appropriation, but once you turn the money over to the library board, it becomes library board a decision, right? Though I would argue that both council and county have significant oversight over who serves on the library board. We have a council rep, we have county reps. The majority of your library board members live in the city and are appointed by the mayor. So there are other ways that the city does have control over the decisions happening, the decision-makers that will come to be a part of the library board. But ultimately, the mayor's correct. As much as Jake, say Jake wants to cut, I don't know, he, he doesn't want us to cut our grass anymore. He likes the, he wants jungle. He's no, he's very pro no-mo-me, and he can cut twenty thousand dollars from our budget as a council, right? But ultimately, it's the library board's decision of whether or not we're going to cut that grass. And things get even more complicated, right? Because technically, the library is a city building. So many of the things become even more entangled. And that's one of the main reasons that I've worked really hard to kind of increase the relationship between the library and the city, because we are partners, and I believe that the library is a really important asset for the city.
Thank you. So just looking at the, um, that eight percent fund balance applied, so my understanding is that, that's a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars that we gave you last year for the, um, solar panels. And I appreciate, no? Is that what that was for?
So-
The hundred-and-fifty?
No, not necessarily. This is, kind of gets to the other point that the mayor was speaking. Once the council-
Oh, I understand that, but when we, I get it, and I appreciate the fact that it didn't, you, you kept it, that it wasn't spent. But my understanding is, last year, we put a hundred-and-fifty into the budget to pay off the solar panels last year.
The, the hundred-and-fifty that was put in the last year's budget for the solar panels was coming out of the, their carryover appropriation. So that was previous year's, uh, unspent funds, and like I said, like, you know, with COVID, and then there was a lot of turnover, so they had a lot of vacant positions. That's where that accumulated appropriation came from, and that's where that hundred-and-fifty thousand was funded from.
Okay, so we didn't pay it?
We didn't appropriate an additional hundred-and-fifty thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Jake?
Thank you. I think there's been a lot of good points made by you today. I'll, I, I'm gonna elaborate a little more on what I was saying earlier. And I'm, I'm strictly looking at this from a financial analysis, and you, uh, I think you used the term cut again, but this time in regards to grass instead of people, because that, because that's not what I'm talking about. I'm, I'm not talking in regards to getting in, rid of anyone, but as we're speaking publicly here, and I'm, I'm sure there's people listening and wondering what, what we're gonna do with the library, and I read the comments last year and heard in the community about the conversation about cutting the library, and I know how passionate people are on it. I mean, just my analysis of it is that when you look at eighteen and a half full-time employees, outside of just their wages, there's other costs to those employees, like sick leave, personal time, retirement, FICA, health, dental, HSA, workers' compensation. With that said, uh, each employee, when you divide that approximately one-point-two million dollars by the eighteen and a half is, costs the cities or the taxpayer, um, sixty-five thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars. So when you look at these and you see that there's six customer service associates, and there's four customer service assistants, or two-and-a-half service leads, what, what those numbers really tell us is that, and I've, I've told the police department this before too, is that you guys are kind of top-heavy in management. And so when I talked earlier about restructuring, and, and nobody necessarily needs to go home, it, there's, there's way to, to work in there. Unfortunately, because we deal in the appropriation money of what we wanna do, I would ask, and it's up to you if you want to, and we'll have to figure out what we do if you don't, but I'd ask if, if you could come with a, a plan either for twenty-twenty-four or what your outlook looks for your personnel base coming forward. Like, if you have someone that, and I, I don't know the library's staff as well as you do, but if you have someone coming close to retirement in a position, in twenty-twenty-five, are you gonna be able to split that position into, say, two customer service associates instead of one higher-end manager? You'd have more staffing, and you'd be able to cover more area, more time at the library. Um, if I were to hear things like that, I think it'd be a lot easier to look at this and be like, okay, yeah, that, that makes sense, this move is being made, there's gonna be an extra per, extra body there to help facilitate this place that everybody goes to and, and loves. Um, but it just, personnel-wise, it's, it's, it's top-heavy, and I, it'll, if you could, me and you can have a conversation about how you wanna, if you have any ideas on that. But, um, that's where I was talking to before. And just noting that there, there's other costs associated with all city employees outside of just what they get paid per hour on a financial side of it.
Yes, um, I can speak to that. I, I do have plans for organizational restructuring. Um, I do believe the titles of these library staff members are misleading. Um, truly, we have right now, um, three humans supervising the team. Uh, the manager title is more of a, kind of a point person on the floor because of the variety of situations that happen at the library every single day. In terms of planning long-term future, um, I am going to be thinking about things. Um, I, I don't love the organizational structure. But I, I, again, um, like I said, I understand why to the council it would feel like we are very staff-heavy. Um, but without the staff, the library doesn't exist. And we need our human beings to, uh, help the humans in our community. But Jake, yes, I mean, I can't promise, I wanna be thoughtful about what I'm telling you. I am going to be thinking critically about the roles in the library moving forward. I think there are some needs, and I think that there are some things that we don't need. And I hope to bring changes next year. Again, those will go through the library board, not council. Um, you guys are always welcome to visit us at the library. Um, that will hopefully continue to serve the city in the way that it needs. Though I, I can't give you any specifics at this time.
That's all right. And I understand the, as you said, humans needing to be there to assist humans. Uh, I don't think you're necessarily staff-heavy. I don't think eighteen and a half employees for the library is staff-heavy. I think it's, uh, like, I use the term top-heavy, but you could- like I use the term top-heavy, but you could, you, uh, management-heavy. And you, you don't like the titles, but when we went over the wages earlier, they actually do match more what would be managerial positions, um, in our other departments and, and private industries. So it's a reflection there of, it is, it is a little top-heavy in that the, we have people at the bottom that get paid X amount. I mean, we got one that's listed as fifteen dollars an hour, which is about thirty thousand dollars a year. And then we have some, one with the title manager that makes sixty. So that could, that person is two of the customer service associates. And, and there's just different things that we could do that, I'm not saying that there's too many employees at the library, there might be too little, but to look at, you know, some possible restructure there, I'd feel more comfortable with than knowing, you know, there's six-degree people there that are getting paid probably what they're worth, but can we afford six-degree people? Or do we need more people at the maybe lower-level positions? Or does a new position need to be created that's more of a middle of the ground somewhere? So those are just the ideas I have and we're, we'll have to go into the appropriation and, and we'll have to see what the conversation is there, but that's where I'm at with it. I don't know where we'll end up here.
I, I was just gonna say, again, um, we are, again, we're limited by this appropriation structure. So it may be, Jake, Jake might be looking at some kind of restructuring in salaries and changing a dollar amount by a specific amount, and I might be looking at something in materials because that's an area I see in the budget. So the point being is, I may say, forget the eBooks, whatever. It's not, as, as an example, I may say, I, you know, I don't see eleven thousand dollars for eBooks as a necessity. And if I think that way, I understand that I'm just putting a number in that, um, the board may think eleven thousand dollars for eBooks is absolutely more necessity than the dollar amount that a customer service person is making. And so I understand where we're at on this. So we have to look at the budget overall ourselves and say, this is where we think it needs to be, and the reason I think it doesn't really make any difference. I mean, it's because we have a, we have citizens we have to answer to and we have, you know, and we have a very tight budget with a number of different departments that are probably gonna see some, some issues this year. And so as, as per last year. So, um, that's just kind of where we're stuck on this appropriation thing, but I think that you do get an idea and the board and people listening do get an idea of the council's direction in certain areas and all we can suggest, but we're not on the board, so. Patrick?
Okay, not to beat a dead horse here. Obviously, state statutes require a minimum of master degree librarians per library. What is that number?
Your library director needs to be mastered, have her master's degree as a grade-one library director.
Okay, and we have how many mastered librarians?
We have six total.
Six. Okay, so I think that's what they're getting at.
And I understand that. Again, I truly acknowledge how frustrating it is for the council to not be able to kind of dictate in the way that you are used to with other departments. That being said, the library board is very aware that the council wants a reduced budget from the library. And as you've seen, and again, this beautiful spreadsheet, this wonderful chart, we have delivered for two years in a row. The library is requesting less than we did in twenty-three. And it has the, you know, has continued to kind of make really tricky cuts, um, to make that request possible. So we are making cuts, we will continue to do so, you know, whether or not Dean hates eBooks, um, you know.
I fall asleep when I'm listening to them.
That's not my fault. You're, you're just not listening to good narrators. You know, I understand.
I fall asleep while I'm reading too.
Well, okay. You know, I, I understand the frustration. That being said, um, you know, all, all of these kind of, um, specific questions about the budget are under the control of the library board. And overall, the thing that you all do have control over is our appropriation via property taxes. And again, we are coming with an eight percent decrease request. I doubt other, we're, we're, we're making a truly good faith effort and the library is now, you know, if, if this budget is approved, will have absorbed four hundred and fifty K in cuts over two years. That's substantial. We cannot keep cutting without a loss of service.
Jake?
And I'm not gonna propose any cuts tonight, just speaking to staffing, I, I mean, there's time between now and the budget and we have a lot of departmental meetings. We're about two million dollars short of what we bring in in taxes versus what the departments have put forward. So I appreciate you coming in under budget and obviously as a council, we gotta figure out how we can make this city operate, two million dollars short of what the departments are asking for and what we're bringing in in taxes. So, so that's kind of where we're, where we're at and it's, everybody's just gonna have to feel across the board department-wise, so.
And I also wanna reiterate, especially, um, I guess we didn't mention tonight, um, where you come from, your predecessor and how hard it was for you to, especially we talked about these numbers on the grounds and the one, the, um, poorly-kept records. And for you to under, try and understand and, and you considerably come under previous years, so we appreciate that. And, um, and I know you worked really hard on that and, and it's, and it definitely shows. I did have one question because I, I forgot to ask this earlier and this is more of a direct-line item thing. On the Makerspace, can you just, um, go through that a little bit on the historical numbers and then the, the twenty thousand on this year's budget and the twenty?
Yeah.
Have you utilized that twenty?
So are we talking about the technology in the Makerspace?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. So yes, um, obviously, the Makerspace, uh, was substantially expanded in the most recent Learning Futures renovation project completed last year. The technology in the Makerspace has been fairly consistent. We've replaced, um, so to give anybody who's not familiar with the Makerspace, we have a number of computers, we have a recording studio, we have a number of, um, I'm not a, don't tell anyone, I'm not a huge Makerspace human. We have different technologies that the community can come in and learn and, um, grow. So those things do need to be replaced occasionally. And, um, if I was a betting woman, I'd say we'd be coming in under budget on that line item this year, um, though I was just told this week that eight computers need to be replaced in my Makerspace, so. Gotta find.
That's a different line item, right?
Well, the technology in the Makerspace is, but yeah, computers and equipment. We go, we, we use a lot of computers in the library. Our patrons used our computers, I think, over a hundred thousand times last year.
Okay, so the computers in equipment line item is like public computers?
Yes.
And then the, the technology in the Makerspace is primarily?
It's, I mean, it's a variety of things, um, a Glowforge, we, we purchased a Glowforge. It's like a, a laser etching machine. But yes, uh, different computers with different softwares so people can kind of try out different things that, I mean, for example, the Adobe suite, humans, most humans can't afford Photoshop on their computer, but they can come to the library, use one of the Makerspace computers and, um, learn how to Photoshop. But those things, um, come out of that line item.
Thank you.
Yeah, good question.
So I understand, thank you, I understand better where, like in twenty twenty-three, there's a fund applied, fund balance applied a hundred thousand dollars, and this year we're doing a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I appreciate, it sounds like, according to Tim, that's, uh, money that's been left over. And again, there's no way to say that that was money left over from the city because there's other funding sources. But we do put in, you know, millions of dollars over the last multiple years that that comes from. So my question is, when that fund balance that's applied runs out? Like the, that's, it's, yeah, so it, it's gonna come up. I mean, we kind of talked about this, but there's a hole there.
Yes, there will, I mean, so exactly right. We have this, you know, carryover funds that existed because of different things, right? Staff shortage, you know, not staff, we weren't staffed appropriately, COVID was weird, yada, yada, yada. Ideally, the idea would be to, to have no carryover, right, from year to year? So having that as a hundred and fifty, again, is more of, it is not a sustainable budget source.
Okay.
But we do want to show council that we're a team, right? And so we're using this money to kind of, um, decrease the amount of property taxes we're asking for in twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, and I definitely, personally, I, I appreciate that, although I've been very well reminded many times that I have no say in it anyway, so I appreciate that. But next year, we are coming, I mean, that hundred and fifty's coming from somewhere, so it's, it's gonna change the, depending on what happens over the next year, of course.
It does. And historically, even within my first year, we've been able to cut on a hundred thousand dollars from one year to the next. Can I guarantee that for next year? Of course not. But that is something that I will be trying to do.
Thank you.
Sean?
Ian?
Did I say Sean? I did, didn't I?
Don't care.
Sorry, Mr. Sheriff.
No problem. Uh, Catherine, I'm still trying to figure out the three fifty you're talking about because I look at our city apportionment from twenty to twenty-three and.
Are you ready, are you ready for a story?
Uh, yeah.
Remember, so when I came bright-eyed, bushy-tailed last year, oh my goodness, what a world it has been. So when I came and presented my budget for twenty twenty-three, we brought forth two hundred and fifty K in cuts, right? Before we even had our conversation. We cut a full-time position, we cut a major service, the coffee shop, we cut line items to a total of around two hundred and fifty K. At the end of the budget, uh, conversation, a hundred thousand dollars was removed from our general property taxes because of the offset in the Wood County funding. So that was a hundred thousand dollars cut from the city's appropriation. That was balanced by the increase of the Wood County funding. So I am counting that as a hundred thousand dollars cut from the city.
When, when now the county's paying a hundred thousand, but if you look at what the city's paying, we're probably, probably at, I'm sorry, they're paying a hundred percent.
They are paying a hundred percent.
We're probably paying two hundred percent.
Oh, boy.
Or a hun, well over a hundred percent. But I'm just, all I'm looking at is, is the apportionment. So when I hear three fifty, I think that the city's taxpayers are being saved three fifty.
Okay.
They're not being saved three fifty.
Well, I'm looking at it as revenue at property taxes that we were going to receive until it, that a hundred thousand dollars was removed from our general property taxes, the amount that we were receiving from the city. Because ultimately, you all are in charge of approximately sixty percent of our budget, right? I think we are unique in the city that we are bringing nearly forty percent of our funding sources from outside the city. And, you know, I understand that we are looking to cut costs, the library has already done that. And by continuing to cut the library's operations or the appropriation from the city, that will continue to cut into the amount of money we can bring in from a, outside the city. So again, the library's complicated and you know I keep saying that, but it could potentially start a downward spiral.
Yeah, no, I'm just trying to figure out the three fifty when I look at the property taxes and the apportionment, it did drop by three fifty.
I mean, I'm, I'm not saying I'm holding a grudge about that, but.
But like I said, the city taxpayers are probably almost two hundred percent when the, and the county made it to a hundred percent. We can move on, thank you.
I'm just curious, Catherine, in two, uh, twenty twenty-two, it was, uh, one million, eight twenty-eight, four thirty-six. And then in twenty twenty-three, it was one million, nine seventy-four, six ninety-six. And you're saying we cut two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of the budget?
Yeah, so there was other sources of revenue that we, um, did not receive because of kind of, um, when we were going into the budgeting process last year, what's so, again, all right, let me step back. So right now, the library has only probably ten percent of its budget known next year, right? The eight percent, the a hundred and fifty K from our carryover and the twenty-six thousand dollars from, um, in-house, you know, productions. So we are not sure of the thirty-three percent from Wood County, the six hundred, whatever. And then we are not sure about the revenues we will receive from the city. So when we were making the budget in twenty-three, there were different sources of revenue that dropped considerably. So while we made significant cuts, I think this was one of the reasons why it was so complicated last year. The cuts we made were invisible because, um, you know, the other sources of revenue decreased dramatically.
Thank you.
Yeah.
But if you look at the library revenues from twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two, they seem pretty consistent that between six and seven hundred thousand.
Yes, but remember, we did not, going into the twenty twenty-three budget season, we were told, your library director was told directly that the library would not be funded at a hundred percent from Wood County. So we were not expecting that funds. And what's complicated is the city of Rapids approves its budget on the very same day that the county approves its budget. Counties in the morning and council was at night. So we really did not know, I think, I had been told by my, um, Wood County rep that we were hoping to get, I think it was eighty-two or eighty-five percent. So that was part of the potential loss of revenue that we were facing.
I, I might move on. The three fifty still is confusing because with library revenues at six hundred thousand and then twenty-three was an extra a hundred and eighty-five.
How about we cut two hundred and fifty K from our budget walking into twenty-three? Because we cut a full-time position, we cut a major service, the coffee shop, and we cut, I think it was, um.
But wasn't the coffee shop a wash? Revenues took in, took the expense? So it was a wash?
I mean, I was arguing it, it was a wash, yeah.
I think it showed it was a wash.
But.
I'm good.
Okay.
Thanks for coming, Catherine, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Close. Motion passed.